So. So, welcome to this very session. Um, I don't know, should we introduce ourselves first? And then subsequently, we'll introduce Sadiq. And then he comes and take over this stage. So greetings, everyone. My name is Kanba. And I.
Can we start on top of the hour?
Okay. We're just a minute to the time. So, um. Okay, probably just wait a few seconds and then. Um, those who are able to join us by seven o'clock on the Thursday. We begin with them. So maybe once the time comes, uh, by seven o'clock at the Friday, we'd agree to just take over from. That very, um, time. Um, let me just share the, the link to the meta page. Alright, you.
Hello, Sadiq. It's good to have you with us this evening.
Yeah, good evening. Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you. Hello, Don Claire. Welcome, welcome, Sadiq. Happy to have you. Happy to have you with us today.
Okay, so, uh.
So I think Quelet, you can take over the mic.
Yes, thank you, Kanba. So this is, um, seven P M. Today being, um, ninth, okay, sorry, sixth of September twenty twenty five. This will be our, is it fourth meeting now? Of the TAP Wikimedia Mentoring Program. This is our online session. So we are all welcome. My name is Quelet. And I'm also member of the organizing, organizing committee for this program. Being hosted by the TAP Wikimedia. And today we are going to be having a season with comedian who will be taking us, uh, into the session to be. So, um, I think from all of us that are here. Uh, we would likely going to start. So that when others come, they can join us, have, you know, why the session is being recorded. They can also, uh, get to listen to everything that is being said on the session. So again, thank you, everyone. So today is going to be like, um, a very special session. It's going to show more highlights about the activities of the Wikimedia Incubator. With our, our topic that we're looking at today is, um. The fast track, the fast track of language Wikipedia approval on the Wikimedia Incubator. So this session will be taken by one of our very good Wikimedia. Who is based in Ghana. He's one of the community leader in Ghana. So, uh, please permit me to just say a little bit about him, because of us who are currently on, so that we get to know. Who we are, who be taking.
So, Quelet, you can unmute your mic now. I just, I just, I just, I just need to tell you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. So, um, today, our, our. Somebody's mic is still on over there. Okay. So our session will be taken by Sadiq. So Sadiq is a certified Wikimedia trainer, a journalist, and a grand ambassador for the Curationist Foundation. He is also the executive director and co-founder of the Dabani Wikimedia Caesar Group, which is based in Ghana. It is a young nonprofit organization based in Ghana and working to support the sixteen. Mabia languages on Wikimedia and the internet at large. So outside Wikimedia, he served. On the advisory board of the UNESCO Open Education for a Better World Program. He was a Mozilla Open Leader, ex-fellow, a most first, uh, Wrangler mentor. And former ambassador for the Mozilla Festival. Sadiq is passionate about open source technology, open data, and open education resources. As a digital language activist, he works with individuals and organizations interested in digitizing indigenous languages. And cultures on the internet. So this is a little bit, uh, a short bio about our facilitator for today. So without further ado, I would like to hand over the microphone to, um, our facilitator for today, who is Sadiq. He's going to take us through this, uh, journey. And he will also have opportunity to say one or two about himself by himself. So Sadiq, welcome. Please, over to you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much for the introduction and thanks for having me. Yeah, you can welcome to some Friday and.
And lady.
Yes, Kanba.
Yeah.
I, I cannot see myself, but I'm trying to on my video to see if you can see me.
Yes, we can see you now.
I don't know what I've done to my, uh, just for a very long time now. I can't see myself.
Maybe, maybe you gave, you gave your camera, Dunku. It, it gave me Dunku.
Yeah, so you're welcome, Sadiq.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I'm very happy to be here. And thanks for the introduction. My name is Sadek Shahado. As I was introduced, um, I'm based in Tamale, Ghana. And I'm very happy to join you on this particular session and also share with you. How you can fast track your Wikipedia incubator project. I know that TAP Wikimedia is not in the incubator. But somehow, uh, there are many other Nigerian languages or maybe TAP may have other sister. Uh, languages or there could be other people in this call who also, you know, understand different languages. And I'm sure this session will be a very valuable session for those people who are not currently on Wikipedia. They are not published or they are not even in the incubator yet. So, um, it's also going to be, um, a learning and, you know, sharing platform. For you to ask questions regarding, um, how you can help other volunteers who are struggling to come out of the incubator. Um, so I don't, I don't intend to share a slide for this particular session. I'm just going, I'm just going to, um. You know, share my experience over the years, how we've been able to, um. You know, support indigenous communities with, uh, Wikipedia, uh, you know, and the incubator knowledge. And how, um, we have been able to improve the platform somehow. In a sense that people can easily navigate around the platform, even though there are still real challenges or struggles for new entries. In terms of how they can, you know, create content on the platform, because it's not that user friendly, as we all know. And also, um, to create templates, maintain templates, and also the technical side of translation and translating Wikipedia. All of that comes, um, into play when you are testing out a language Wikipedia in the incubator. So I'll just share briefly with you. I also work with the Wikimedia Language Diversity Hub, um. Which is, um, a thematic hub that works to support Afri- not African languages, but Wikimedia. Uh, indigenous communities like the TAP and Dabani and the likes. So, um, since twenty nineteen, I've taken, um. Time to, you know, really explore the incubator and to also understand the. Real challenges that smaller language communities face. Haven't been like, uh, someone working on smaller language projects like the Dabani at that time. It was very important for me to understand the essential needs for the language incubator or Wikimedia incubator. What is required and some of the guidelines that would help people navigate in the incubator. And as part of this process, we also conducted a research to understand some of the challenges that smaller language. Uh, communities face. And after the research, we were able to understand the real challenges and we. Narrowed everything to four key major challenges that came out of the research. One of them was, um, the technical challenges that all of us are already aware of. The second one had to do with, uh, education in terms of the knowledge, um, about the language. And then the third one was also about, um, you know, uh. Basically like economic challenges. In terms of how to raise funds or mobilize resources to support individuals who contribute to Wikipedia. And one of them could be the basic like allowances that we provide to volunteers, like data allowance. Or stipends to help them, you know, contribute to Wikipedia. So these were some of the challenges that we discovered. And the real challenge, I must say, lies on the interface itself. As all of us, uh, if you have tested the platform before, if you have edited in the incubator. You would agree with me that it is not the same, uh, compared to the published Wikipedia. So if you were in the incubator. You probably, uh, need to learn so many things. Unlike the published ones where you just go straight to create articles from scratch or edit existing articles. Add, you know, infoboxes or databox and all of that. Link articles to other articles or to wiki data and many other things that can be done seamlessly. With the main language Wikipedia when it's published. In terms of how we do all of this in incubator is slightly different. Um, for incubator, you have to really understand, um, the basics, which is, you know, templates. Almost everything that you do on the incubator, you need to understand how to use templates. Copying template from existing articles and pasting them on the incubator is very important. And then editing in general, like inserting references is not as easy as you would see on the main language Wikipedia. I'm sure most of you would attest to this. And because of this, there's a lot of, um. You know, community members who have struggled and have spent so much time. You know, editing in the incubator and sometimes they get frustrated and they decide either to leave it or maybe just pause for it. For a while. And for someone who cares so much about communities that are. Less represented on Wikipedia and the represented communities and also minority languages. Who are looking for ways to document their language. It is very important for me to support in the best way I can for such, um, cases. So I collaborate with many other volunteers, experienced volunteers at the Language Diversity Hub. So that we can provide all this support, both human support and technical support. Now we are also, um, moving forward to providing micro funding in the coming round where. Volunteers can support, can get support from us directly to, you know. Support their communities. As I mentioned, one of the key, um, challenges were financial challenges for smaller communities. Because if you are. Language Diversity Hub have decided to, you know, source funding from the Media Foundation so that we can provide, um, stipends for that. I will move, in brief, I will move to the main, um, topics that I want to share with you. Um, as I said, I won't be sharing slides. I'll just highlight the most important thing that you need to know. In case you want to take note, please feel free to take note. And then, um, feel free to also, um. Let me know if you have any question at any point. I will be happy to pick it. So why are we contributing to Wikipedia in the first place? Most of us will agree that the smaller language communities or indigenous communities, um. Comes to Wikipedia to not just write articles of have a feel of they having their content published on Wikimedia Platform. But, um, they use Wikipedia or Wikimedia resources or platform as. A, a way to document their cultural and linguistic heritage. We use it to cover significant stories about our people, places, and everything as, as a people. And as part of, um, our effort to improve the visibility of our languages in Africa. That's why we find Wikipedia one of the easiest way to, you know, integrate our languages or create awareness. Or improve the visibility of our languages on the internet in, in general. So, um, just like you and me, Dabani, uh, as a community have gone through the incubator. And as at the time we're translating and creating articles in the incubator. A lot of things were not very easy like that as compared to now. And one of them I would mention is the fact that you can now actually install. Or run, um, wiki data powered infoboxes on your incubator, even if you are not published yet. You know, so that's really a good step for. Smaller language projects like that. And there has been like, uh, other, um, development things. So many things have gone into. Test for the incubator to be able to have like, uh, an easy access, even though it's still not, uh, very similar as we would want it. But there has been a lot of challenges and changes, uh, in terms of how we contribute to the incubator. Uh, there are so many of them I will be sharing later as part of the session. But one of the things that I will be talking more about is, uh, how do we fast track? Our language Wikipedia project in the incubator. So if somebody asks me, from my point of view or from my perspective, the most important thing that you need to. Set yourself on the path of getting approved in the incubator is building a community, which is very important. So point number one, I would say, build a community, identify volunteers. Focus on those who would be contributing to the platform. You cannot have a project running without people contributing to it. As of us know, Wikipedia is built by several volunteers. Who contribute to make it better. So if you want to have a language published, it is not one person's effort. It is almost impossible for you to have a language approved if you don't have, um, a community. So one of the requirements that the language team requires is that you have. Uh, a strong community. You can have a lot of people in the volunteer, like as volunteers in the community. But, uh, identify the real community. When I say real community, I'm talking about individuals who have interest. In one way or the other, in the language, for example, teachers, students, language activists, researchers. These are category of people who would somehow have a lot of interest in the advancement of the language. Compared to just random volunteers like, uh, uh, yeah, like you do an advocacy or a post on social media and everybody comes in because they are native speakers. Not everybody understands the language. Not everybody can write as much as they speak. So if you build your community around, uh, this kind of, kind of, uh, volunteers outside the three that I've mentioned. You will still struggle to come out of the incubator. So identify the community. Based on their interest in the language is very important. And focusing on them at the beginning would help you fast track the process of getting approved. And as a matter of fact, it's one of the key elements that they consider when reviewing the application for a language or a new language. By the language committee. So build a strong community, reach out to students. There are languages that are not taught in schools or they are not like government sponsored languages, um. They may just be like a language spoken by maybe less than five million, um, maybe less than one million or so. Or the language is not even widely used in the country. It doesn't mean that you cannot be on Wikipedia. Every language can be on Wikipedia as long as you have what, an ISO code. You have a language code, you can actually be on Wikipedia. There are languages that have been in the incubator for many years, even though they have so many speakers, like. Uh, I know there are some languages in, um, places like Indonesia, which has about seven hundred languages, I think. They are still struggling in the incubator. There are other languages in the Asia region. I've seen being in the incubator for many years. But on the flip side, we've seen smaller languages like the TAP community is not as big as maybe, um. Other languages in Nigeria, but they've been able to come out of the incubator because of the community. So if you don't have a vibrant community, it doesn't matter how big your language is. It doesn't matter how visible the language is. Whether it's government sponsored or it is used in education or is supported by the country or educational system. You will still be in the incubator if you don't have a solid community. So identifying the right community and volunteers is very important. As I mentioned, students, teachers, researchers, language activists. Even, uh, advocates or journalists who write in this language is very, very important. Or generally language aspect linguists, all of them are very, very, um, um. Like they have a lot of interest in the language. So once you identify them and you are working with them, it makes it very easy for them to, to support and create. For example, if you go to a school that they teach TAP language, either in the university, maybe first degree. You see, they do everything in the language. They write their exams in the language and all of that. So when you bring Wikipedia to them. It, it becomes very easy for them to accept it, right? Because they know that, oh, this is what I'm already doing. So I can easily transfer that, their skills into the platform to make it a better, um, to make it better or to also contribute in one way or the other. Um, once you get the community running, once you set up or build a community. It doesn't matter how large the community is. You just need that kind of interested individuals in this category. The next thing you need to do is to set up the incubator. Uh, no, already, let's just assume you are already in the incubator. So the next thing you need to do is to design the interface. The interface of your language Wikipedia would, uh, help, depend on how you, you, you design it. Attract more people to edit. Some people just set up an incubator with several articles or sub articles or content. But the interface still look like when you just set it for the first time. That way, uh, it doesn't encourage more people to come to, to edit, especially newbies. Discourages people, um, in contributing to the platform. So I would recommend that you focus on building the inter- interface. Like designing the interface, uh, the translation will come later, but just make sure all the relevant pages, uh. Uh, templates are created and the pages are set up so that people can easily see and it will attract them more to contribute to the platform. The third point I would highlight is requesting for admin rise for volunteers. So if you are in the incubator and you want to get your language Wikipedia approved faster. It is important for you to have at least two or three administrators who would review, patrol and, you know, safeguard the platform. Because, um, there are a lot of influx in terms of, uh, wrong content or people just jump on. And then they write anything on the platform. And everything that you put on Wikipedia can be edited, we know. But if you continue to, um, receive this kind of wrong content or, uh. An encyclopedic style writing, style of writing on the platform for several articles. Chances are that you will lose them when they are final, when your language is finally approved. So make sure you have admins who would dedicate their effort in safeguarding the platform, you know. Reviewing articles, ensuring that every article meets the encyclopedic standard. Ensuring that they follow the Wikipedia, not follow everything that Wikipedia standard, the English standard is. But just follow the basics, like, uh, writing from a neutral point of view, you know, uh, providing the right references for Wikipedia articles. Yes, um, you may write articles in the incubator without, uh, references and still, you can still walk away with that. But it is advisable that you start treating it rightly from the incubator. So that when you come out of the incubator, you have less work to, to do. So creating, uh, having, um, admins or people who would safeguard the platform is very important. And then the fourth point I'll share is creating the right template. Most people, um, go to Wikipedia and they go to the, uh. Other language Wikipedia, the so-called big language Wikipedias like the English Wikipedia, and then they just copy content. If they are doing, let's say, translations, um, they just copy the content with all the templates in the language wiki. And then they paste it in the incubator and then you see all of them flying all around and some of them are in red and stuff like that. Uh, we cannot say you should translate everything or maintain the standard of the English Wikipedia in terms of templates or pages that are linked in the article. But it is important for you to, um, create the very relevant templates that are useful for your language Wikipedia. Without having to copy templates that are already on the English Wikipedia. So templates that would help you like the ref lists and all other things, categories. Um, you know, subcategories and all of those things are very important. So that when you create content, you can categorize them and then you have a, an appealing view when people visit the incubator. So creating the right and relevant templates is very important for every language Wikipedia project. And then, um. In terms of content, somebody will ask, what kind of content should we create? So that, um, will be approved or what la- uh, category of content should we be creating at this stage if we are still in the incubator? Well, the answer is there is no specific category of articles that one should create in the incubator. What is required is to create a diverse set of articles, create articles that are. Not one-sided like topic. Let's say you are creating articles on plant only for the whole project. Every project that, uh, you run, you are creating articles based on that particular topic. You should create diverse category of articles, like some on science, people, places, animals, um, you know. All sort of articles. Make, make sure you mix all of them together. That's one of the requirements, um, that is needed. If they pick your language incubator and they see that all the articles that you have created are, for example, politicians. There is going to be a lot of, um, questions around why you create articles only on politicians. Or you create articles on only animals. There's going to be a lot of questions on why you create articles on animals. So in order to fast track your, because when you get to that stage of approval process. And then you'll be, you are forced to, you know, create different kinds of articles to match with this. It can be a lot of problem or burden for you. So from scratch, it is advisable that you encourage volunteers to create articles. In different topics, articles that are related to different topics. That helps a lot. And the most important thing, uh, amongst all of this is translating on MediaWiki. Uh, you need to make sure you translate the most used messages on MediaWiki. And the messages are those things that we see on the published Wikipedia or English Wikipedia, for example. The interface itself still has a lot of messages like create account, login, you know, log out, homepage, um. All of these that we see on the main page when you open every Wikipedia, uh, homepage. Those are the most important messages. Beyond that, there are hundreds and thousands of other messages that you, 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 you can create or you can translate. But the most important ones are the most used messages on MediaWiki. That helps a lot in, um. Getting approved. So if you do all of these, build a community, a lot of articles created. You have, um, a lot of, you have admins, you have created a lot of templates, you have created diverse group of articles. And then you have not translated their most used messages on MediaWiki. You are still not fulfilling the requirement, the basic requirements of, um, the approval process. So these are the most important, um. Uh, thing that you need to know when, you know, uh, applying to be approved on, uh. For your language Wikipedia. Another thing is, uh, once you get to that stage. You should also be able to create, make a request on meta, like submit a meta request officially for the approval of your language. So there's an easy process in doing that. You just go to the page and then create a meta page. And the meta page request, it asks the name of the language Wikipedia in your language and that name in English. The ISO code and then, um, a few other information. And the reason why you are requesting for this, uh, um, particular language. So creating a meta page request. Um, helps a lot in getting, uh, approved. So if you do. In getting uh approved. So if you do everything like that without uh creating it or submitting a meta request. People would see you. Uh I'm happy that some of the um administrators or the language team, they scan through all the uh. Language projects in the incubator and then sometimes they reach out to you to create your, to do, create them. Um, your awareness about what you can do. Sometimes they just tell you, this is the next stage. And you should do this and that. Somebody will reach out to you. Uh we've seen that you have created this and you have done a lot of translations. We have created so many relevant. Pages that are required. We've seen that you've met the requirements to set up a language Wikipedia, but you have not submitted a meta request. So it's it's very good that we get um some of them reaching out to us to um ask us to submit requests for that. But as outside all of this, if you don't submit an official request, you will still be in the incubator unless somebody reach out to you. Submit that formally. Then another important part of.
So I think his network is a little bit down. So please let's exercise patience. We are all Africans. So we know how this is going back. So it's not, it's not peculiar to Nigeria alone. Even the Ghanaans are feeling the heat. So please let's give it a moment for him to return. Thank you.
Hello.
Yes, so they will can hear you. Continue.
Recovering from cold, so I'm coughing a bit. Sorry for that.
Sorry about that.
Yes, so um the other part of the requirement uh was before I went off was that um. Said you have to look for a language aspect. You will need to identify somebody who has a fair knowledge of. Uh, the language. Most at times they require someone with probably like a PhD or M field. Or advanced degree in the language. Um, sometimes they are just looking for someone who is a linguist. And also understand the language. So they need to know that this language. Um, the the aspect would provide like information about the language and they will ask certain questions about the language. And the person should not be a volunteer. He shouldn't be an existing member of the community. You need a neutral person who has not contributed to the Wikipedia before um to vouch for you. So it's more like um vouching for the community to get approved. If you don't get um this person like a language aspect, it becomes a problem for you. That could be a barrier. So whilst you are in the incubator, it is advisable that you um have somebody stand by. So that when you get to that stage for the approval, you can uh submit the information about this individual to the committee. So that they review and then they ask the relevant questions before they make um any advancement with approval. So getting these people is very, you can provide more than one if you want, but having at least one person is very important to them. Because the those who review and approve the languages are not, they are just Wikipedians. And they are, some of them are foundation staff who are working as a language co- commi- at the language committee. Or the uh Wikimedia Language Team. We have two. The committee are the ones that uh, you know, review and approve. The uh the application of uh new uh wikis. And then we we have the Wikimedia Language Team. So the Language Committee and the Language Team, some of them works in both departments, some of them. The team itself are actually employees of the foundation, but the committee are made up of individuals from different um communities. Who have like some level of understanding and expertise. So one of them is Amir, for example, doubles as a. Language Committee Member and also a member of the Wikimedia Language Team. He says, um, staff member of Media Foundation. And then, uh, John Harold is not uh part of the language. Um, team, but he's a committee member of the language. Kim Belly, um, you know, and several of them. All of them are um, they they help volunteer their time to make sure all languages that are in the incubator. Miss the requirements uh before they make their approval. So getting the aspect is one of the important things that you need to consider when you are requesting for a language uh approval. And this helps you fast track the process. So if you don't understand all of these, you are likely to, you know. Stay um in the incubator for long. And then the other part, which are not like really major um requirements is. Creating at standard Wikipedia articles. When I say standard Wikipedia articles, it doesn't have to be a fully fledged article. But any article that has, for example, a heading which is not all caps. Same people write articles with all the letters being capital letters as headings or titles of articles. That is not uh acceptable um in Wikimedia Incubator if you are requesting for approval. So make sure the headings or titles of the articles are, you know, just like how you would write it when you are writing. An article on any publication or online. So usually we keep the. I mean, the first words, the first letter of the word are caps and the rest can just be small letters. So it shouldn't be all caps. That's just basically what I'm trying to say. It also doesn't have to be all small letters, you know. So that's one important thing you should do. So when you are creating articles, you should make sure they create the articles in this direction. In a way that they don't write only um capital letters. That can hinder the approval process. And then um a good article or standard Wikipedia article, as I said, it doesn't have to be a fully fledged article. But it should also have like at least one or two references. If it's a stub article, a stub article is a small article. Like when you just start a line or two, that's a stub article. It's considered a stub. S T U B. So even if it's a stub Wikipedia article, it should have at least one reference, you know, to. Back whatever claim you are making on the article. That helps a lot. Every article that you write should have at least one or two references in the incubator. Even though it's not. Because of the flexibility of the Wikipedia incubator, or even if it's published, this doesn't really hold you. As much as you would have experienced when you are writing on the English Wikipedia or the big language Wikipedia. So you have the flexibility of using a few references in your article compared to the English Wikipedia. You can basically like do away with certain um references if you like and nobody will ask. But the advice is that make sure you retain um at least one or two references, even if you are still in the incubator. This helps the approval process. And then interlinks, there should be like linking Wikipedia articles in other articles. So writing about, for example, Nigeria on T I A P Wikipedia, and then you see the independence of Nigeria. Or Abuja, all of that, you can actually make links to them so that other articles can be linked. That makes it very um good uh article for approval. And then um you should maintain all the punctuation and, you know. Uh, the basic things in writing, like full stop and all of those things. Make sure you apply all of them. And then the sections, sections are very important in article creation. You cannot just write plain articles without sections. Paragraphs and stuff like that. So make sure you create sections for each uh line that you are creating. If it's a stub article, it probably would have no section or maybe just one section. But if it's a big article that you have translated, it is important that you maintain the sections. So um the first one that talks about the biography or the life of the person, their work, academic qualifications and all of that. Those are very, very important when you are creating articles. And then um categories. If you are in the incubator, mostly um you have the WP. It will always have the extension of WP and then whatever you are creating. So even if you are creating a page, unlike the main language or published wikis, you just go straight and create the name, put the title and then you hit enter. Then you start creating them. With the incubator, you have to qualify it with the prefix of the language. So four slash WP and then your language. For every page, templates, everything that you are creating, you have to maintain the prefix to be able to create it. So if you don't create prefixes for them, it doesn't stand and it's, you will lose that content when they are. When they uh finally approve it. And as the categories I mentioned, um for a good way to maintain. Like standard Wikipedia articles, it is best for you to categorize your articles. So you don't have to have every category for all your articles, but the basic ones like plants, people, um women. Uh, animals and all of those things. So for every article, you should provide at least one category or two to make it um. So adding categories are very, very important. And then um the other one would be um maybe reference list. So you should also maintain a reference list. Once you insert the reference in the relevant references in the article, you should put a ref list. Where all the references will be listed or counted as we see on the main uh language Wikipedia. So these are other general requirements that is uh needed for you to be able to um. Come out of the incubator or fast track the process of getting published in the mainstream. And I don't know if that was the case for the T I A P Wikipedia, but um some of the committees that have supported over the years. Some of them have lost chunk of articles because they were not able to, even though they created very useful content. They've translated from English to their language Wikipedia, but they were not able to maintain this uh encyclopedic structure of content creation. On Wikipedia and as because of that, they 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 were able to lose so many articles. When they imported the main article. You know, what they do is um after everything is done or when your language is approved. There's somebody who would import the article, they import them in bulk. And when they are importing them, it has its own criterion. So it's just like if this one meets this requirement, import it. If this one doesn't meet this requirement, it remains. So you will see that after they import it, they first it takes, it used to take like longer. You just see after, maybe if you played like four hundred. Or maybe five hundred articles, you see them coming like maybe the first day you see like maybe fifty, the next day you see maybe a few other articles added. But now it comes so fast, even the import, importation process has been streamlined. So you can have it imported like at a go within the same period, like in few minutes, you should have everything added. But all the same, if you don't put it in the right manner like the encyclopedia standard. They may not be able to come out of the incubator. They will remain there. So I don't really realize that you have created, when you were in the incubator, you have like maybe one thousand articles. And then after the approval and importation, only maybe five hundred or seven hundred have been imported. The rest of them have disappeared because they did not meet the requirements um the encyclopedic standard. That is required to for them to import it. So that's how the system, you know, works. That's how the platform works. So if you don't want to burden the community of reinventing the wheel by creating all the lost articles. Because once it is approved, you slowly lose the incubator. You will not be able to go ahead and say, oh, let me go back to the incubator and pick them. And then copy and paste them again. So your effort will be loo- uh will be wasted. So in order not to waste so many um articles or lose them in the incubator. Try to um from scratch, write them in a way and manner that. To be able to get your language approved. Um, aside from that, what else? Community. So even during the approval process, I mentioned the committee as one of the first requirement. But even um when they are approving the 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 project, they don't normally ask. How many people do you have in your community? They look for what active editors in the language Wikipedia. So you can have the community, oh, we have this number of people on our WhatsApp group, we have this number of people that comes to our online meetings. But how many of them actually edit on daily basis? And those who edit on daily basis or maybe at least weekly basis are the ones that they consider active editors. You can have like hundreds of people create their account usernames and editing on the language Wikipedia. But how frequent do they edit the Wikipedia is what matters most. How often do they edit? So if there are people, maybe up to ten or even five people. Who edit on daily basis, that is considered a significant number of uh active editors. And that can help the approval process. But if you edit like maybe once in a week, you come to the recent changes. And you see just one edit by one person and then the next time you come, it's still maybe one or two. That doesn't make it like uh the company, it doesn't make the company an active community. So active community is a community that has at least one or two people editing on daily basis. Creating, adding, fixing errors and just, you know, improving the articles generally on the incubator. That helps a lot. So aside from having a big community, you should also look at how often do we edit the language Wikipedia. So when they go, they just look at what are the most recent changes over the last few days. And then from one week for maybe two weeks, they will see who and who have edited the Wikipedia platform. And how many articles they've edited and stuff like. So they just want to see something, basically like, we cannot also say, oh, they should edit like. What they should have like one edit or they should make one edit in a day or maybe every minute or every hour. That's not what I'm saying. But they should somehow be doing something on the platform like once in a while or on weekly basis. Or within the course of the week, one or two people have edited a thing or two. That's what um is considered like active um community. So something should always be happening in the incubator. If nothing is happening, they are skeptical about the approval. Because if you don't um edit when you are in the incubator, how sure are they that when when it's published. You will still be able to edit, edit the project. So they want to see that kind of active community enthusiasm. Before they will make the decision to upload their language Wikipedia. And then, and then um. So um we've also seen, I don't know if all of you have observed, if you have followed the incubator communities. Or if you experienced that in the T I A P community before. We've realized that when a language is in the incubator, you see a lot of activity going on. But the moment the project is approved, everything slows down. People don't edit as much as they, they, I don't know whether they just feel like, oh, now we have arrived, we are on the Wikipedia. Then they start jubilating and then everybody relaxed and then it becomes a struggle to maintain um the project. But a very active community will find a way to continue editing. But the general uh understanding we've had about. This whole approval and incubator editing process is that people loses interest. When they are published, when the language is published, they relax. I don't know whether they relax or they lose interest, one of them. So the activity reduces. Uh, that's what we've observed. I don't know if it is the same for T I A P community when you are approved. Now you will need to find another level of energy to maintain the number of uh volunteers or active communities. By creating com- um, you know, editathon contest, running a series of meetings and trainings and all of that. Building capacity of volunteers for them to be able to continue editing. But it is very strange, I must say, that when you are editing in the incubator, it's very difficult, but people still find their way around it. But once it is published and it does, it has now become very easy for them. They try to, you know, relax, you know. I don't know what, um, we are still looking at um um the possible causes of this kind of situations. And how um we can provide support to published communities. What exactly is the reason? Um, are they so excited that they don't want to come back and edit? Or they have other challenges when they are published. I'm str- I'm still struggling to understand what the real um reason is. And why people lose interest when the language is public. But that is the truth, um at least from my perspective. Um, working with um um language committees um under the Dagba Wikipedians. Um working with um um language committees um under the Dagbani Wikimedia User Group. Um we have currently five published projects under the Dagbani Wikimedia User Group and then we still have one in the incubator, hopefully it will be approved. So I've seen this kind of dynamics, dynamics around um how people lose interest in when the language is approved and compared to when they were in the incubator. Aside from my country, I've also seen that um at uh in other countries like um several volunteer committees who have also struggled to maintain the momentum when they are published. So these are just um a few tips I would share with you. Um as I said, I don't have slides and if you can maybe take notes of all that I'm saying. And I'm also more than happy beyond this call, if you want to have another kind of engagement to, maybe you can reach out to me anytime. You can also always contact the Wikimedia Language Diversity Hub if you need any kind of support beyond um what we have discussed here. I would share a few resources um from the, this is the Language Diversity Hub's um website, also on Meta. So you can contact us, just submit a request for any kind of support you need, either mentorship, um human support, technical support. And I just mentioned the new approach that we have um designed to support like financially for those who want to organize editor turns ranging from five, I think.
Uh sorry, Sadiq, it's as if the network doesn't want us to hear the amount too.
Um okay, you didn't, oh, okay, so it's five hundred, up to five hundred. Did, did you get it now?
Okay. Yeah, we've only heard five hundred.
Yes, so this um amount is uh kind of like a micro grant that we are hoping to um, you know, provide for some language communities. Uh we hope that it will be useful, it's not that much. But as I said, this was part of the research um program that we identified as one of the barriers, which is economic barriers. Because um a lot of communities cannot access rapid grant because they are just starting up, nobody knows them and the people don't even know what they are doing because their language is not, it's not published, it's just sitting in the incubator. So it limits their chances of getting support from Rapid Grant or Wikimedia Foundation. So we um as a hub sees the need for us to support uh in this direction so that um at least we can cushion them to be able to organize like meetings virtually or maybe in-person workshops. So um these are very little things that we want to do. And last year, if you followed the activities of the Language Diversity Hub, we provided mentorship for certain communities where we guide them from whatever they are requesting to the end. If you are looking for maybe a particular guide on templates, maybe WikiData powered infoboxes or maybe translations and all of that, we assigned um mentors to these committees and individuals and they were able to help them. We are maintaining the same level of support this year. So our official activity starts this month, September. And you can also join the Language Diversity Hub's Telegram group where we share more of these opportunities. So feel free to join there. I'll try and put the link in case that is useful. Yes, thank you for sharing um combined, yeah, that's the link, you can just join the Telegram and ask all the questions. I don't know if there are questions in the chat, I'm just looking at, we have just several minutes to end, right?
Uh yeah, not, not, actually not really, you know.
Okay.
When the host station is getting straight in, interested, even me myself, I didn't even know that the time is fast spent already. So uh but just a quick one because I know uh when you throw issue of uh uh some support like this, most of the community members will be like, uh how does it work? Okay, let me just get you straight, Sadiq. This funding, is it for the, is it for uh Language Diversity Hub or for the Dagbani Community Wikimedia User Group?
It's not Dagbani Community, it's from Language Diversity Hub. Yes, so as, as I said, I work with Language Diversity Hub, uh yeah. So that's coming from Language Diversity Hub, yes.
Yeah, you know, when you were about mentioning this, there was a network glitch, so we didn't quite get it right. So I just want to be sure.
Yeah.
And uh I, I believe the Tiau comedians, we are also uh part of the Language Diversity, Diversity Hub. And does that mean that, okay, our own community members are eligible for that grant? And what are the criteria to assessing those grants?
Yeah, so uh right now, we don't have any kind of specific criteria. As I said, it's just based on the fact that people need support to maintain um the activities, yeah. So um we will, we will share the form in the coming weeks, I think. And anybody can apply, whether you are in the incubator or you are published. Once you are interested in, you know, organizing um an activity, it's just basically to support people who need like maybe data allowance to provide for volunteer members or for food and other things like that for their community. So as I said, it's not that much, but this is just our own way of supporting new communities. So everyone is welcome to apply, the TIAP committees welcome to apply and there's no strict rules or requirements.
Thank you very much, Sadiq. So at this point, I would like to sincerely appreciate you for, this is actually an eye-opener. For the TIAP, I believe for, for some of us who are in the TIAP, in the TIAP now currently, we have um about a community now, which is the Ju community, which is currently in the incubator. And subsequently, maybe in the next two weeks, we should be having another one coming on board. That is the HAM uh Wikipedia uh on the incubator as well. So uh for my counterpart or my colleagues from the Ju community, I believe we have all had what Sadiq said. Uh we, we, all we need to do just with the writing. And without doing the writing, we can stay for quite a long time in the incubator if we are not very active. So please, we should do well to um, you know, bring in more people and to see how we can move this community forward. And he just shared an opportunity with all of us here and that is one of the good things about this community. The Wikimedia community is actually open and with quite a number of opportunities. And this one he just mentioned is just one of it. For us who are language uh promoters or language Wikimedia editors or we are ju- we just belong to one affiliate or the other and we have programs we can attend or a party uh uh organize. But you know, the activities for every, if you are to bring in one or two or five people, it requires some kind of uh logistics. So for those of us who have project in mind, I would think we can pull it through as a, as an active community members who can run to the Language Diversity Hub and see how we can be able to raise a little bit talking to support whatsoever activities uh that we need to organize. This specifically is going for the Ju community who are still like toddlers. At this age, they are still struggling in the incubator to see how they can bring themselves up. And the activities they have been running is quite limited. And with this, I think it is going to be, bring a boost for the community to be able to organize more programs. So uh Sadiq, thank you very much for sharing this and sincerely we appreciate you for what you just said to us. And for other prospective languages uh coming up in the incubator, you have had it. So at this point, I would just like to show the whole thing open for all of us who are here for questions. If we have questions, please let's um bring it up so that Sadiq and any of us can see how to handle it. So any question at this point? Sadiq is here, you people should ask questions. If you leave Sadiq, he left and then you come back to me, ask him a question, I will send it to Language Diversity Hub. Or I will send it to Dagbani Wikimedia, you're gonna miss Sadiq over there. But Sadiq is here with us, uh he will provide the firsthand information whatsoever we need to respond. Okay, um Elusen, please.
May I join later? I want to know where Sadiq is calling from.
I'm joining from Ghana, Kamali, Ghana.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh Elusen, your hands are up.
All right.
Sorry.
Hello.
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right, um I would like to start by thanking Sadiq for uh telling us what we can do in the incubator. So my name is Usaini Mohammed and uh our language Wikipedia is there in the incubator since two thousand uh twenty twenty thirty. We are not now uh active. So after that, we uh engaged our task into uh, you know, writing, editing and all that things. So uh as I'm speaking today, we are not in the uh midst of active wiki in the incubator. So I want to ask Sadiq, uh what do you think is our problem? So that we can correct the problem and at least move on. And another question is that we translated the most important languages, maybe uh around uh eighty, ninety eight percent. Uh remain only two or three, uh maybe less than ten words that are, are not translated there. But the link to me, Media Wiki and Wikimedia is not there of today. So what do you think is the problem that bar the community to link our translation to Media Wiki and the Wikimedia?
Uh the, the last one, if I get you right, um I don't know if somebody can, I think I, I didn't get the last part. Asking for translation. Are you talking about translating on Translate Wiki or linking from WikiData to your language Wikipedia?
Okay, we translated most important messages that is. They link with all media, uh with media, with Media Wiki and Wikimedia. There is a uh two dot online, you know, most important languages. There is star, that's red star online. So it, it shows that they are not linked with Media Wiki and Wikimedia. So what do you think I wish to do so that it will be linked?
Uh okay, um so um you are talking about media, uh translate wiki, translation on Translate Wiki, not link on Media Wiki?
Yes.
Okay, so I tell this one, you can submit um the list of the translations to me directly. Then I can review, I can look at it, if you can just send them to me from Translate Wiki and we can look at it together. Now we, so I can, I will understand what um the challenge is and then I can get, get back to you with um some answers.
Yeah, so, so Sadiq, uh let me share my screen, maybe I think I understand what he's saying.
Okay.
Yeah, so if I share, there's something similar with the Ju project also, just like the Bole Wikipedia. I think it's around this place, uh Elusen, is it what you mean?
All right.
Uh i- is this what you mean? Can you see my screen?
No, I cannot see. Yes, yes, I can see, yes, yes.
Okay, but, okay, you can see it, but uh so that's the way it shows in Bole Wikipedia.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, okay, so maybe I was just wondering, yeah.
Okay, okay, I think I get this one. Uh it's, I don't know, I, I've left Translate Wiki for some, like many years, but I didn't know about this challenge. So I can, I'll, I'll look it up on what the language code, um your ISO code. Uh so I can just look directly in your language, then I'll, I'll reach out to you back.
So I think um Elusen, for the best way for you to get a proper guidance on how to go about this, maybe you can reach out to Sadiq.
Yes.
Privately so he can provide uh at least guidance for you on how to go about it.
All right, all right. Okay, we have email.
Yeah. I'll.
All right.
You can email us directly at the Language Diversity Hub, then I'll, I'll get the email, just uh this one.
Awesome. Thank, thank, thank you very much, Sadiq. So um any other question, please? Any other question? I'm expecting that uh we still have some people who are still battling with the incubator, maybe there are some challenges. Okay.
I think I asked two different questions. He answered one.
Okay, maybe that's why I said, if you can reach out to him privately, maybe he can just provide enough, he can have enough time to guide you on whatsoever challenges you are having in the community.
All right, all right, all right.
So uh Uncle Zaks, your hands are up.
Okay, uh thank you for this time and opportunity. Uh Mr. Sadiq, thank you for uh for all you have said. Even though I was kind of caught off somewhere, but uh I know that they said where you met somebody that you also already ahead of you. Sometimes you need to know exactly uh where they are, why they are doing what they are doing. And although that also can also help you also to see, maybe shed some light on where you are, where maybe you have a misplaced priority in what you are doing and they can also help you. So what I'm trying to say is that uh Mr. Sadiq, I know that uh you have been on this uh this wiki there for a very long time and you are challenging a lot of a cause in order to help others people to connect to this. Uh so my question is this, what is uh, what makes you uh successful in this? Why are you doing what you are doing? What is your goal? What do you want to achieve in what you are really doing in order to try to bring people? Is it only to bring, is, what is, what is your drive?
Okay, this is very, very good, I like this question. Um I think this is the question that I ask everyone um when I recruit volunteers. Like um there must be something, um as you know, I've been working on the language projects for many years now, since twenty sixteen I started editing. Um if you ask me, the answer is simple. Um there's very little information in our languages. Our languages in Africa, most especially, are less represented on the digital school. Uh our cultural, rich cultural um heritage, rich cultural um identity, our information are less represented in our own languages. And we have also seen a lot of people misrepresenting our languages. Significant decline in the uh in learning of these languages. If you observe over the past years, so many people are losing interest in speaking their languages. So um one of the reasons why I do what I do or I support these la- language projects is basically motivated by the fact that these are challenges that I see in my community on daily basis and I want to fix them. My goal is to make sure all languages, especially indigenous languages, especially in Africa, are well represented on the internet. I want to see more people taking pride in learning their languages because um one of the things that uh identify us as a people is our language. One of the unique features we have in Africa is the languages that we speak. So if also UNESCO is saying that for every year, several languages are disappearing, it means there's an urgent need for us to do something in order to uh protect these languages from dying. And one of the main places that we find very easy is Wikimedia, where we do not have to pay money. And one of the main, um, places that we find very easy is Wikimedia, where we do not have to pay money for hosting. Do not have to pay anybody to write for us. So my, what drives me or my passion is basically centered around the fact that I want to promote indigenous languages. I want to promote indigenous culture. I want to provide, um, support so that languages or our languages in Africa can thrive on the internet. We can rock shoulders with all the other languages. As we can see now, there's, um, AI. There's natural language processing that is helping people to easily, um, solve basic life problems. Like translation in terms of disaster, translation in hospitals and healthcare provision, um, making, uh, information very accessible. There are people who cannot read and write in English, but they can read, write in their own languages. But they don't have resources, they don't have platform that they can express themselves. And that's basically the reason why. There's no any other reason why I do this. My main reason is to make sure these languages thrive on the internet, basically using Wikipedia as a starting point.
Thank you, thank you very much, Sadiq.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, sorry, uh, I have, uh, thank you. I really appreciate, uh, your, your response. Okay, uh, secondly, I just want, and will I say this is a kind of an advice of what, what in this way, uh, you know that Wikipedia is not a kind of, uh, a kind of, uh, financially, uh, beneficially oriented kind of, uh, an avenue. So, uh, uh, people now don't look at it, uh, the people do, uh, how can we, uh, beat out the interest of people, even as you want to bring them into Wikipedia, how can we beat out their interest? Bring them closer so that they will be able to, uh, bring them together and work together with them?
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I think, uh, that's exactly what everybody will ask. Because, um, even on the English Wikipedia, retaining volunteers is very difficult. Because people don't get paid for editing Wikipedia. It's practically free, um, and at your own pace, it's purely volunteer. How do we build communities if there is nothing to gain from, um, Wikimedia Foundation? Everything is volunteer. How do you keep people going? Sometimes it's very difficult to, you know, invite people to come to edit that on when they know there's nothing they will get, especially for us in Africa where getting job is very difficult. There's high unemployment rate where people are just looking for jobs to sustain themselves and you are bringing volunteer roles to them. How do we keep them going? If you remember my first submission, I mentioned that I focus mainly on people who matter most. People that are not struggling to convince, I'll just, okay, you are writing the language, you are researcher of the language, you are a student of the language. You know, it's very easy to convince them. This is what we are doing. It is about our language. You can see other people's language next to your, your country, within your country or outside your country. This is what is happening in the world. How do you feel when you go to the internet and you cannot find any information or access any information in your language? So you have to psych them to believe that whatever they are doing here is for their own good. It's not about money. So my passion is driven by the fact that I want to see my language thrive on the internet. So once they come into the community with this kind of mentality or you bring them with this kind of vision, you have to make it very clear to them from the beginning. It, 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 it's not compulsory to force everyone to edit, because if you force people to be in the committee or you psych, entice them with money, they will definitely, I, I've also realized that over the years, money doesn't, even though we all need money to edit, people always talk about, oh, we need money to buy data to be able to edit Wikipedia. But my little experience over the years have, I've discovered that even when we continue to give people money to edit, like as part of the compensation for data allowance, it still doesn't motivate them enough to edit. Most of the people that retain, um, like our volunteers that we've been able to retain over the years are not people that normally, uh, get this kind of compensation. But you can also organize an editor town, for example, in a school and then you provide people with all these kind of goodies like souvenirs and also like, um, transport allowance. When they go home, they will not edit. So I feel like, oh, it is very important for us to support people to at least offset certain costs so that they can commute the venues or, uh, also like buy internet data to be able to, uh, edit. It doesn't really keep people from editing. It doesn't really keep people to, to be editing Wikipedia for a very long time. Though, no matter how much you try to impress them with all these things, they will still lose interest at the point because their first point of call is motivated by money. Now, if you are able to give them data allowance or maybe transport to come to the venue, how often can you provide this data and transport and data allowance for a very long time? So, and then even if the continue, the company continues to grow, can you, do you have the capacity to continue to give people data allowance? And for now, you have like thirty people, you are able to provide them with data allowance. When you add thirty more people, do you have the same capacity to provide that same amount of money? So from the beginning, you should already start laying the foundation by letting them know that when I give you this, it's just a, a personal way or it's just a committee way of appreciating your effort. It doesn't mean that you always be getting data allowance to edit. But when you make them get used to data allowance or I need data allowance to edit, they will never continue editing until you provide data allowance. They will always rely on transport to come to workshop, they will rely on data allowance to be able to edit. So me, I, first I tell them, you are a speaker of the language. If you don't do it, nobody will do it. We have started it as young people and volunteers editing in Tiap Language Wikipedia or our Language Wikipedia. There are a lot of people who have more experience and expertise than us. They are not doing it. We have taken it upon ourselves. So, and even if we also stop, nobody will do it. So you better join us. Let's continue to edit the Wikipedia platform. So this way, at least it will create their awareness about the fact that, um, there's a sense, some sense of ownership, like they own the platform.
Yeah, yeah.
So that if I don't contribute or I don't participate in all activities related to Tiap Wikipedia, things will not go the way we want it to. I always psych them in my community. That's how I psych them. I don't entice them with money, but as and when there is the need for me to motivate people, I motivate them. But we realize that even with all the prizes, if you like, try that for consecutive, like we were doing some project with, uh, when I was working with Global Open Initiative. We do Parliament of Ghana Contest Series, like several editor series where we provide data allowance and give vouchers. And we realized after two or three, the rest were just now focusing on the money, the prices. And they lost focus on editing. So anyhow, they will do to get the end goal, like the price, that's what they will do. And then they start creating all this sort of like, I tend to create a lot of competition, who gets the money and all of that. So, yeah, motivating volunteers is very, very important, but the self motivation, psyching them to take ownership, uh, of the project is most important. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Sadiq. So, um, so thank you, Rokondi, for raising those, uh, vital questions. We sincerely, that, those are very bullet questions. And Sadiq, for tackling those ones, uh, we appreciate you as well. Because we as a community in the Tiap, we are, it's, it's a general, uh, experience. When it comes to the orders, how to retain editors, it is a, a global, uh, challenge al- already. So just as you narrate all this, uh, these are ways to just bring in the people to let them know they own this project. It is not my own project. It is neither Cambai's nor Sadiq, nor Jacob Isama, nor, uh, Rokondi. It is our own project. So first of all, the person have to own it so that you have the sense of, uh, belonging, the sense of ownership. That alone is one of a very good motivation for the person. Remember, it is not everybody that you bring into the program that you must force the person to stay. No, you don't force anyone until they, if they see the need to continue contributing, then they go ahead, but you don't force anyone. But even though, as, uh, Sadiq just, uh, said blindly, for those of us who are contributors, as we keep on moving, you are going to unveil a lot of opportunities in this. Even though we or organizers of programs do not support you with anything, just keep doing what you do. The more you know it, by the time you become so strong in whatsoever you are doing, you can also begin to organize programs. Then from there, you will understand the challenges that previous organizers have been facing. If they are enjoying, you totally enjoy. But if they are struggling, you also see it. So all you need to do, just be committed to whatsoever you do. Be committed to it. Be on it. Be intentional about contributing to this project. And, and trust me, quite a number of us in the next two, three years, if you, if you, 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 you don't see yourself the same way you are today, if you keep on doing what you do. So Sadiq, thank you very much. And at this point, I think our time is fast spent. Our time is fast spent.
And, and just the last part, like somebody will be asking, what, if I don't get money, I'm unemployed and I'm part of the committee, what exactly do I seek to gain? Most of us, as you can see in the community, some people have gotten jobs through this volunteer work with Media Foundation, other athletes. People get, uh, travel opportunities. You don't have to pay any money. You pay, they, they pay for your flight accommodation and everything. You fly to attend conferences for free, you know, those are other side benefit that maybe we should also be interested in. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much, Sadiq. So that's why I said the opportunities are enormous. The more you get involved, the more you get to know them. But you can't stay one side and then expect, uh, manna to form from heaven. It doesn't work like that. So you have to be intentional about what you do for you to at least. So that by the time those people come in with the intention of not getting anything, so whatsoever they get is just a bonus for them. So first of all, bring in the people without any intention or anything to gain out of it. So as they keep going, they will see if there are opportunities, they go to harness it. So at this point, uh, this is twenty minutes past eight. Um, I don't know, we, for those of us who might be having other questions, we can just find the, the way, our way to the language diversity hub. I believe Sadiq and other, uh, community members in the language hub will attend to us in any key, uh, of our, uh, questions. Any question that we raise there will be tackled. So, uh, before we, 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 we wrap up, uh, um, I would like to just, for those of us who are just joining in, uh, lately, let me just read the preview or the short bio so that you will get to know who Sadiq is. Because for those of us who just, uh, joined the meeting halfway after the whole thing has been ready. So Sadiq is a certified, uh, Wikim- Wikipedia trainer, a journalist and a brand ambassador for the Qureshans Foundation. He is also the executive director and co-founder of the Dabani, uh, Wikimedia User Group. That is a young nonprofit organization based in Ghana. So it is also a counterpart, oh, yes, of the Tiap Wikimedia. They're based there in Ghana, but to some level, they are older than us, so we call them our senior brothers. But Sadiq Donja carried away with that anyway. So, um, and they are also working to support about sixteen Mabia languages on Wikimedia and the internet at large. So outside Wikimedia, he also serve on the advisory board of the UNESCO Open Education for a Better World Program. He was a Mozilla open leader, ex-fellow, a Mo- Moesfes, uh, rangler mentor and former ambassador for the Mozilla Festival. Sadiq is passionate about open source technology, open data and open educational resources. As a digital language activist, he works with individuals and organizations interested in digitizing indigenous languages and cultures on the internet. So Sadiq, this is who Sadiq is, a brief about who he is. So Sadiq, thank you so very much. We are very glad to have you this evening with us. And just as you said, when we come knocking, you'll be there to answer. So Sadiq, thank you very much. So at this point, I would like to hand, yes, I would like to hand over the mic back to, uh, Cambai to also, uh, Chipe. So Cambai. Your mic is muted.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Sadiq, for the presentation. And we are very grateful to have you today with us. And the Tiap Wikimedia today, I think when you knew us, we are just Tiap Wikimedia. And we only had the Tiap Wikipedia, which shall I, but later on, we then have the Juu Community, the Juu Wikimedia Project. And we are just following gradually be- behind the Dabani Wikimedia's, um, effort in pushing for the digitization of the languages that are related to the Dabani language around Ghana and, uh, other center countries in West Africa. And over here also, we are working towards to ensure that the languages related to Tiap especially and by extension, other languages that are around our region also get to be pushed out the, or Wikimedia space so that we can be able to safeguard these languages from the bigger languages that are actually threatening the existence of these very languages. So we really appreciate today. So, um, before we call it a wrap, uh, next, uh, yeah, thank you. So, uh, next event is going to come up by, is it nineteenth or eighteenth of, uh, next, maybe the next two weeks. So we can always check the calendar, the meta page, um, and also our social media handles. We're going to see the updates concerning the programs that we're going to have next. And for, for those of us who are also Tiap speakers, or even you are not a Tiap speaker, but you'll be charged to join us uh, by next week, uh, on Friday online for the Tiap, uh, mentoring, I mean, for the Tiap, uh, Wiki Bootcamp Program. Yes, so that we, you can learn something about the Tiap language and even Sadiq is also working. And I've actually seen that the Dabani language is somehow, somehow related to the Tiap language, I, you know. Uh, Sadiq, how do you say, how do you say I want to eat in Dabani?
I want to eat like warm and.
You see that? Uh, can you hear it? So, so like in Tiap, you just say in China, Chiya.
Wow.
Um, that's, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's very similar.
Yeah.
You know, did means eat, yeah. Cool.
Okay, did to eat. Okay, in, in, in Tiap, it is yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and to see is, uh, what in Dabani?
Nya, le, nya, look.
Okay, le. So it's to, le, le is to see.
Yeah.
So it's more or less like ego. To see is this, it's a le, but in Tiap is li.
Okay.
Yes. In Tiap it just li and the euro brother is closer to you, there is just, they just change the L to a. I don't know if they have a meeting with letter F.
Yeah, and you know that Dabani has this history, uh, from northern, like, like migrating from Zamfara to northern Nigeria, you know, that kind of thing. So there could probably be so many other languages in Nigeria that is much closer to Dabani. Or we also migrated from northern Nigeria many, many years.
You probably, you probably migrated from, uh, area. Because if you look at the North Culture, now they said the North Culture is like, uh, that's a lot of people migrating, uh, here. So probably it could be from the same culture that gave it to, you know, us and then others around us also. So that's why we actually need to write our history.
Yeah. And I'm really, I'm really a big fan of the Tiap Wikimedia community. I've, I, I, I use also your, um, some of your activities as a reference to the Dabani. We all learn, we learn a lot from all the things that you do. Recently, I was telling them to adapt your style of documenting. This is your content called, the page looks really classy, like everything looks solid. And I'm very, and thanks to you, Friday, for all the work, like, it's, it's amazing, like, how you've been able to put all of this together within the shortest possible time. It's not, I, I know it's not one of the major languages, but what you have been able to do over the years, uh, like, it's, it's crazy. It's really inspiring. Keep it up.
Thank you.
We hope that we will work very, very closely together and then see that we all support each other in one way or the other. And I also, let me share this also with you. We are planning, uh, Wikimedia Language Conference. Uh, the, it's, it's going to be the first of its kind, um, like, we don't have any language conference, a conference that is specific to languages. And the language diversity hub in collaboration with Dabani Wikimedia User Group and Wiki Thoms are planning, um, a conference of this nature, first of its kind in Ghana next year around June. We have, we just submitted the application and.
Okay. So you see, the netto, whenever they want to dish out something good, the netto will just come up. So we will not agree to all this kind of thing. The netto will better return.
So, uh, we hope that the grant will be approved and then we can have all of us meeting together and sharing and learning from each other, like as a language community. And most of the conferences like Wikimania, Wiki in Daba are not really, um, uh, specific to languages, but we want to have that kind of atmosphere where only language committees will have the opportunity to discuss what really matters to them. So hopefully, let's pray that. So hopefully, let's pray that this gets approved and then we can meet together in Ghana next year. And the next one will be in another country, so it will be rotational. Yeah.
Okay, okay. So thank you very much, Sadiq. Thank you so, so much. So for those of us who are on the call, and for us to be getting this information firsthand, please, we should do well to join the Language Diversity Hub on Telegram. Because there are a lot of updates that are coming directly, uh, from the leadership of that, uh, uh, of that commi- community. So please let us do well to join it, so that we can be getting the information firsthand. So Sadiq, thank you very much once again. So, um, Kamby, any final words before we go?
Uh, so I, I have no final word. I think I've said everything and I just want to appreciate Sadiq again. And maybe if there's any update on the conference coming next, uh, year, hopefully that very grant will be approved. And then maybe there will be chance for some of our community members to also be present. So I think the update will be there on Wiki Language Diversity Hub. And if there's any, we still, um, share it with us again. Um, but I think I've shared, no, okay, it was, let me just leave that.
Alright, so, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Kamby. Uh, so, Sadiq, honestly, from the bottom of our hearts, on behalf of the TAP Wikimedia User Group, we sincerely want to appreciate you for this time. Thank you so very much for your time with us today. And we hope to also have you again some other time when the need arises. Our executive director will also reach out to you after all you people are on the same WhatsApp group. It's like fight for them, nothing concern us. We are in the community, you know, concern us. So you will set your scores there. So, thank you so very much. And, uh, so to all of the participants who have tuned in time to be part of this session, thank you very much. So Ishak Kubabi, we have seen you, El Usain, thank you very much. Uh, Samquai, thank you. Uh, Alka, Samantha, thank you so very much. Uh, Eli Samson, thank you. Iyoma, Weham, uh, Rokondi, Nachali, and our big uncle JJ, thank you so very much, everyone. And, uh, I'll see another one again. Okay, TFK, thank you so very much. And to my own self, thank you, Kuyet, thank you. I did win. So, so, so thank you, everyone. We sincerely appreciate you. Please do, 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 do keep up the good work. However, we are doing, we shouldn't stop. Let's keep up the, the good work. If there is any question, please, you know how we are to find us. Just drop your question, we'll see how to, we can tackle it as a community and as a team. So on behalf of myself and everybody in the, the leadership of the TAP Wikimedia, we want to say thank you once again. And please enjoy the rest of your night. Thank you. And bye-bye.
Good morning, good morning.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sadiq. Bye-bye.